Good evening and welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting for September 18th. We have a lot of people in our audience today. We really appreciate the time that you've taken to attend city council meeting. Hope if you have something you wish to address to council that you feel comfortable and being able to come up and give us a chat and a little bit of insight into what you're feeling or have desires for. We are going to start this meeting with a roll call and then Pastor Bradley from Bridge to Life will offer our invocation.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B Smith?
Absent.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Let's all rise for their invocation.
Father in heaven, thank you for the privilege of lifting up the leaders of our city. You made us, we belong to you, we answer to you. If we are going to do your work on the earth, we need your wisdom. So I pray for that wisdom for these leaders. I pray that you will reward them for their service. I pray that you will make the greatness of your love for them real to them. May they find joy in their service and sense your nearness and your approval as they seek to do what's right for the citizens of our city. Amen.
Amen. Will thou have a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address city council on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to mention that the regular monthly meeting of the community advisory group for the Superfund site is tomorrow, 3:00 PM. It's a hybrid meeting both on Zoom and in person in a classroom at the PCC Fremont campus. We're expecting any day now, should be tomorrow or Wednesday, the release of a work plan called the Human Health Risk Assessment Work Plan for the site, which will help identify additional environmental testing that needs to be done in the area. And so it will be a really important report that we have, we the community and the community advisory group have perhaps only 30 days to review and provide feedback on. So we're looking forward to the meeting tomorrow. They are always public meetings, so you're welcome to attend.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to flag the community agency funding application period is now open. So any community agencies that are interested in receiving or interested in being considered to receive funding from the city of Canyon City have until 5:00 PM on Friday, September 29th to submit those applications. There is more information online that you can find at www.canyoncity.org. And they are for the categories of community service, youth education, and quality of life. I also wanted to flag one of my favorite museum events is coming up, which is Hike with a Paleontologist. Highly recommend registering online. It's a lot of fun. I had the pleasure of doing it a couple of years ago and it was really fantastic. And then lastly, one more plug for the Soul Vista movie screening this Thursday evening at the Canyon Cinema. It should be a really educational and informative opportunity to learn more about suicide awareness and prevention in the outdoor recreation industry. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody, we do have a vision committee meeting day after tomorrow, Wednesday, here in these chambers at 5:00. We're going to be talking about a well ordinance and tennis court conversion.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. And I was wondering if you'd be willing to lead that meeting?
Sure.
My seventh grader has a home football game that day at the same time, about the same time, and I'm like, I just can't miss it. He's so excited. So...
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Thank you. I would like to say that I'm in full support of pursuing pickleball courts at Centennial Park. I drive by those tennis courts all the time and they're hardly used at all. But if you go to the pickleball courts at Kyle Horn, you know, the Parks and Rec District has pickleball courts and they're always crazy, crazy busy. I think there's definitely demand for it. So there's my input publicly for that.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to also thank the city for proactively reaching out to those folks who do play tennis because it is important that they have a chance to be part of that conversation with the pickleball craze sweeping the nation. We want to make sure that we still have the space for those who are playing tennis. So just huge thanks to our Parks Department for proactively reaching out to those folks as well.
Also, congratulations to our brand new sworn in as of today Officer Michael Gordon. So really excited to have another team member on the CCPD. We're going to move on now to our consent agenda. Ryan Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on September 5th, the general government meeting is September 6th, and the special meeting August 30th, which was the Water Committee, and the September 5th special meeting, which was the Red Canyon Trail Selection Committee. 7B authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for 1445 Willow. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the county for water line replacement on Grandview Bridge. 7D authorizes the city administrator to sign an agreement for training services for K-9 and Police Department K-9 and in amount not to exceed $13,500. Staff is asking to remove item E. 7F awards bid 6023 Keystone Electric Valve Actuators to Applied Controls and in amount not to exceed $21,000. 7G awards bid 6423 Rainbird IQ4 Irrigation Equipment to Site One Landscape Supply and in amount not to exceed $24,841.67. 7H authorizes a vehicle to be declared surplus and be donated according to city purchasing policy. 7I authorizes vehicles to be declared surplus and disposed according to city purchasing policy. 7J is to receive and file monthly budget summary and 7K is to receive and file list bills, key card dispersments.
Any questions or comments from council? We will start with council member Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I wonder, I believe there's been some wording changes in the Water Service Agreement, item 7B, and I just wonder if we could kind of have a summary of what the changes are.
Sure. I'll ask Water Superintendent Travis Payne to come up and summarize those.
So I provided you guys with a copy, kind of a clean copy with the highlighted sections that are changed, what it's been changed to. You can see in section 5, it was just typo. It was thereof and we just replaced it with of. In section 8, simplified it quite a lot. There was a lot of extra verbiage in there that didn't apply to this water service contract. So we decided to go ahead and simplify it to just what they would be required to provide, which would be the $1,000 fee in lieu of water share. So this is kind of our first iteration of this since we passed the change in code. So just had to clean up the contract a little bit. So those are the two main changes.
Catherine, since we've been given these changes now, do we not need to amend the agenda? Or does it still need to be amended?
No, you don't need to amend the agenda, but if you decide to keep this on your consent agenda and approve your consent agenda, we'd request that you approve your consent agenda with the water service agreement as presented amended.
I believe you might have some questions on this for you, Travis. Does anyone have questions? Okay, go ahead, Schmisher.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Given that this is the first one that we are considering under the new city ordinance, I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit about the process?
Councilmember Schmisher, is your mic on?
Thank you so much, Administrator Stevens. Thank you so much, Water Superintendent Payne. Given that this is our first water service agreement under the new city ordinance, I was wondering if you could share with us a little bit about the process? Did we offer for them to give us ditch shares or the $1,000 fee in lieu of? How did that conversation go?
Sure. So for a single-family residence, would it only be just the one equivalent dwelling unit charge? I didn't ask because water share going for at least $3,000, if not $5,000, or the $1,000 fee in lieu of charge, I guess I made the assumption that they would just want to pay $1,000 rather than either give us a $3,000, you know, share or, you know, that money. So that conversation didn't happen. I just assumed they would want the fee in lieu of $1,000. So, yeah. So they, I mean, basically they usually call me up or they submit a tap application for an address outside of the city limits. And so I draw up the water service contract, give it to them, give them a few days to kind of digest it, and then they get assigned and get it back to me.
And thank you so much for that. And then based on our ordinance, that $1,000 will go into a special funding pot set aside for raw water acquisition?
Yeah, so we have a raw water acquisition fund we've had for a very long time, so it goes straight into that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I did have a question on the disposal of the 2007 Jeep Liberty. And that is, that's an as-is donation, I understand.
That is correct. It's an as-is donation.
And are there any problems or major repair issues that we're aware of with that vehicle?
You know, it's an older vehicle. You know, we maintain our vehicles as best as we can. I do know that DeeDee Clements from Loaves and Fishes did, she had an opportunity to look over the vehicle and meet with Jim Johnson, our fleet's manager, to talk about the vehicle itself.
She has inspected it.
Yes.
I think she brought somebody with her to help her inspect it as well.
Oh, good.
And when Jim Johnson reached out to me, he did say that it was in good condition. I know we've been kind of waiting for one that would be more appropriate to donate to Loaves and Fishes. And this is for, in particular, Loaves and Fishes has received a million dollar grant. They're using it in a number of ways to help address homelessness. And one of those ways is hiring a new position of a homeless navigator. And that way they can really be that orchestrator of all the different organizations and entities that are working with homelessness to make sure we're all working together on the same page, especially with homeless outreach. They really needed to have an opportunity to actually get into the community and throughout the community, especially if there's potentially like a hotline number to call if there's issues that they can hop in the car and get there. And this is a way that we can help support that position.
Thank you for that.
Any more questions for Travis while he's still up here? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question on 7C, which is the intergovernmental agreement with the county for the water line replacement of Grandview Bridge. I believe in 7C, it says that we will be notified before paying rather than incurring. I'm just going to that particular page, though.
I missed what section you're referring to.
So 7C, number four?
Number four.
It says if the costs of the city water line exceed $126,490, the county shall send notice to the city of additional costs prior to the county paying such costs. I wasn't sure if that should be, and this may be more a question for attorney sellers, if that should be prior to the county incurring such costs because otherwise that could be an unauthorized commitment of the county on our behalf.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble understanding you. I don't know if you're, sorry. So your concern was it would be an unauthorized, sorry, I missed that last part.
Sure. So in number four, it says that if the costs exceed the amount specified, the county shall send notice prior to the county paying for those costs. I would expect that we would want notice before the county incurs costs above that amount because if the county incurs costs above that amount, that could be an unauthorized commitment on behalf of the county, on our behalf, essentially.
Well, the county can't bind us in that way. Governments can't bind each other in that way, and I'm not concerned about their side of things. But I think what, I think the only reason I have concerns with accruing is if something happens during the construction project and there isn't time to give notice and it needs to be dealt with, then that would be a violation of the agreement. I mean, I agree, it would be nice to get the notice before they incur any costs, but that's my only concern with that language. But it's council's call.
Well, they have attorneys that protect their interests as well. And technically, this road is in the county. I mean, it's their road. Yeah.
And for clarity, we'll be onsite while they're working on the water main. I mean, we'll be inspecting all work done, so we'll be well aware of any surprises that would incur extra costs well before any decisions are to be made, and we'll be part of those decisions.
Great. Thank you so much. That alleviates my concerns.
All right. Thank you, Travis. We appreciate you being here tonight to address our concerns. Chief Shook, would you like to address council about our K-9 donation?
Madam Mayor, members of council, so there's been a few questions concerning Ventosa Kennels and why we selected them. Just to simply state, consistency is a beautiful thing in training, particularly when we're talking about high liability areas such as police K-9s. Ventosa is the master trainer for our most recent training endeavor with Chief Fresquez out of Center Colorado. They trained him. And we would like to go to North Carolina and get that perspective firsthand from Ventosa on our second handler. That's going to provide us with a number of opportunities to improve our product, per se. The training with Center Colorado was quite adequate, but the repetition available, the smaller training cadre, and quite simply the smaller selection of K-9s put us in a situation where we didn't have the same latitude that we have at Ventosa. Our second handler, in fact, he's in North Carolina today looking at K-9s and they're trying to, the beauty in Ventosa with their expansive training cadre and their dog selection is being able to first partner a dog that's suitable to the agency's needs and pursuits, which in our case, we want an enthusiastic and energetic dual-purpose patrol K-9 that also has some social graces left about him so that we can bring him out into the community and not worry about our citizens at large. So by going out to Ventosa, we get a wider selection on K-9s and it's a more focused effort in that our training, our officer will receive focused training and more repetitions just because of the nature of the relationship. When we go out to Ventosa, our handler will live onsite with the K-9, train onsite with the K-9 consistently for six weeks, building quite a rapport, a relationship, and a working tempo. So we tried to experience that in Center, but as a part-time, part-time business for Chief Fresquez, our training tempo wasn't what I would have liked it to have been, honestly speaking. Not that there's anything wrong with Casio or Officer Fry. They have come out certified by industry standards and are continuing their preventive maintenance or their training with additional organizations, most recently with Douglas County. So Zach has networked quite well. So, but getting back to Ventosa, they matched the dog and the handler. The dog is trained before the handler ever arrives and they're certified. So essentially, they're training the handler how to manage the dog more effectively. When we partnered in Center, we had a new dog, we had a new handler, and that made our training a little longer. So Ventosa's able to offer things that many other organizations cannot in that training tempo. Some of the other things that are essential, while we maintain that same consistency in the training, recognizing again that Chief Fresquez was trained by Ventosa. So the standards, the practices, all of the things are consistent. I talked about Ventosa housing both the K-9 and handler during the respective training. And it's also a very personalized program. So if, for some reason, the dog and the handler are imprinting at a rate that they're not happy with, we can roll them back and stay onsite. They do remedial training with one-on-one instruction, very focused endeavor. So I'm highly confident, having had a relationship with Ventosa Kennels previously in Virginia, we trained, I think, three K-9s there and two handlers, one of which matriculated to a master K-9 trainer. They have an exceptional reputation and these are the reasons that we chose to go with Ventosa.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any further questions for Chief at this time? Councilmember Schmisher?
Not a question. I just wanted to say that I was really glad to read in the narcotic detection test requirements that the team would also be trained on fentanyl. It's obviously a huge issue facing not only our community but our country, and I'm just really glad that our K-9s will have that capability as well.
Yes, ma'am, and I am too.
Thank you so much, Chief. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, ma'am.
If there's no further questions or comments, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with item 7C amended for the water service agreement, or as amended, and then removing item 7E.
So moved.
E is removed.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Councilmember Tracy?
No, I was just going to make the motion, so no problem.
Call a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the city administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. You have the written report in your packet, some additional items that have come up since the report was written. The Police Department tomorrow, they have a meeting with a multi-disciplinary team regarding homelessness and how to assist in that particular endeavor. There's the Coalition for the Homelessness, which is a group of community agencies that currently gets together and they're working towards solutions on a more general basis. This MDT, as it's being referred to, is going to be getting together and looking specifically at the top 10 to 20 more individualized solutions that could help individuals get to the resources that they need. So that is a, is a new endeavor that we're looking at and trying out in attempts to alleviate some of the issues that we're seeing. A demo permit today, we issued the demo permit for the classroom building on St. Scholastica so that there starts to be some movement over there on the Scholastica site. So that's, that is not the Cabrini Building, the historic building, but the other classroom building. So that will be coming down. The building permit was issued for Planet Fitness today, so that project is continuing to move along. Madam Mayor, you mentioned the swearing in of Officer Michael Gordon, so happy to have an additional officer on the force. And Councilmember Schmisher mentioned community agency funding, which ends on, closes out on September 29th. And then the last big thing that is going on right now is the city hall roof is being replaced. So we've had a lot of action, a lot of construction noise during the day, but happy to get this roof finally replaced. It's a 20-year-old building and after the hail damage, saw a lot more leaks after that. So happy to take any questions.
Seeing no questions at this time, we are going to move on to item 9A, and that's to approve the final designs for the Main Street creative sidewalks. Who's going to be taking that one on?
I will start. We received a grant from CDOT to create a creative sidewalks program to help revitalize Main Street. And we opened that up for voting from the public and got a really good turnout, not just from artists, but from the community in general. I'm going to pass it over to Leo, who's online, to talk a little bit more about the program and what we were looking for and some of that response.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. As Ryan mentioned, we've done a lot of work. We had a lot of great engagement on this project. We started this out with a solicitation for artist ideas and concepts. I believe we had over 40 that were submitted through that process. The team that was working on this project, which consisted of some city staff and some members of the Public Arts Committee, reviewed all of those, screened it down to about 25 that met the project criteria to be placed on the street. And then those 25 went out to vote. What you see today on the agenda are the top eight scoring proposals that are proposed for placement up and down Main Street. Each of these displays will be constructed twice, once on a side street, once on Main Street, throughout the corridor at 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th Street. I don't have my agenda right in front of me, but in the packet, we list the product that'll be used. This is a printed sticker product from 3M. It's a two-part system with a vinyl underlay and then a laminate over the top with a grip surface on it. It is approved for sidewalk, outdoor-type construction. We've engaged with a couple of the local print shops and found that they are able to print these and produce these. So if this goes through tonight, we'll go back out and start soliciting bids to get those ordered and printed. The one thing I will note, the product is temperature-sensitive for installation, so the installation will probably, most likely, happen in the spring, which also will prevent any kind of damage from occurring from snowplows and things like that. We'll be able to get one good season out of them for sure and then kind of measure their durability and see how they go from there.
Thank you, Leo. There was a request in the audience, is there any way that we could show the pictures on the screen of the crosswalk designs that are going to be selected, the top eight? Do you know between our IT or...
I don't know that IT has the packet back there, so I don't know that they can share it. Leo, do you happen to have it up on your laptop?
I do not on my laptop. I can try to get it pulled up here in a minute.
We have it on, we have it here, but it'd be nice, even just for those that are watching on Facebook, to be able to see it when they go back on YouTube. I know we have, one of the artists is here. I'm wondering, are you guys an artist? Which one is yours?
Mine was the dinosaurs.
The dinosaurs? Awesome. And then our other artist back here?
Um, mine was the bighorn, I'm out.
Yeah, so it's really exciting that you're here tonight, and thank you for your submissions. We did also get another request from the folks, this whole row back here representing the FCD-PHE, that's their employees, one of the ones that selected for the bighorn sheep, and wondering if her artwork could be a little bit closer to the block where they are, so that would be nice to have it close by. And just thought I'd put that little plug in there for y'all.
We will try and accommodate as much as we can.
Yeah.
We are getting requests for, you know, based on certain things, trying to line everything up to where it makes the most sense.
Hmm, okay, makes sense. Well, there you go.
And we did ask the artists to be here, and assuming this passes and goes through, you know, if we can take an opportunity to take pictures with the artists.
Oh, yeah, that would be wonderful. Do, would you like to address city council at all?
No.
That's what our other artist said, too. Councilmember Schmisher?
I was going to make a similar suggestion to Administrator Stevens. I had the pleasure of serving on this particular committee and it was a lot of fun to be able to review all of the proposals and then watch the votes come in. Over 500 people actually voted on which of the local submissions should be displayed downtown. The... The fact that it's grant-funded and that we now have local art, or will have local art that's designed for our community, selected by our community, I think is really exciting.
Imprinted by local companies.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's really going to be some really big pop that's going to happen downtown. Looks like the screen sharing might be happening. So, yeah, I think there was 562 votes in all. There's our dinosaurs. I think this really encapsulates who we are as a community. Waves, the boats, the bridge. Love it. Thank you for pulling that up for us.
And we did mock up the intersections to, you know, try and keep like designs together and themes.
Yeah, I noticed that. Yeah, I thought you did a good job in how you made it work out. Beautiful. Well, let's invite our artists to come on up, if you wouldn't mind coming right up here to the front. Are you okay with that? And we're going to get a picture together.
And we do need a motion to approve.
Oh, I guess we better do a motion before we take pictures.
Head it, Amy.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Main Street creative crosswalks.
Second.
Oh, that's a close tie. Motion and a second has been given.
And authorize staff to begin procurement.
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Let's call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
as well.
Tracy?
He happens to be out of town today.
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Oh, which one did he do?
Aye.
Awesome.
I think he did some of the kayaks.
All right, now we can take pictures. The kayaks?
So the biking and the rafting and the rafts and the kayaks and the river fun.
Yeah, he did a couple.
We just needed one with inner tubes and loner life jackets, but next time, maybe.
Maybe we could have that spill out onto the sidewalks. We could still just do some rock like that. Wonderful. And did we mention it's not going to go in installed until springtime?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that's...
We will try to get them installed shortly before blossom.
About what's the approximate cost for total intersection, which is four graphics, is that correct?
Leo, do you happen to have that offhand? The question was the total cost per intersection.
Yep. I believe it's going to be around $3,000 to $4,000 per intersection, which fits within the remaining grant allocation that we have.
So that's about $1,000 per graphic. I was just wondering if this is really successful, we might be able to get other people interested in doing something.
Yeah, the committee that got together had some discussion about that. There were some additional designs that had books involved and potentially doing something like that over by the library, Fremont Center for the Arts, things like that.
Yeah, with that product, it can go on sidewalks and on sides of buildings. It can use stormwater funds if it has a stormwater message. Yeah, there's all kinds of possibilities that have been opened up to us for a lot less money than $1,000, because not all of those would require going across the entire street. So I'm really excited that this is starting to happen in Canyon City. Okay, swimming pools next, another exciting topic. Kyle Horn, if you want to go ahead and come up, I know we're going to have questions for you, but Ryan, if you can get us started on this topic.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Attached, or actually at your dais, is an updated version of the intergovernmental agreement. In the packet was an original draft. This is something that's been working all the way up to this meeting. So the Rec District is currently working towards a feasibility study for replacing the Ichabon Pool. We have had a couple of meetings and received proposals from two different vendors, and what we're looking for today is an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Rec District to help assist with paying for that feasibility study. Obviously, this is something that impacts Canyon City greatly, but it also impacts our surrounding communities as well. We know that the city of Florence, you know, their pool was completely packed and booked most of the summer with a lot of overflow from Canyon City residents because there was no pool here. So that has an impact on our neighbors as well. The request, what we're looking at from the city, would be a $25,000 contribution. This would come from my budget. I have contingency funds. There would be a $25,000 contingency allocation from the city administrators' fund. The overall cost, we're looking at roughly $80,000 when you include the incidentals, the travel expenses and things like that. We're putting in 25. I know the Rec District is contributing 30,000, but I think at this point, we'll probably hand it over to Kyle to talk a little bit more about what other steps the Rec District is doing to help bridge the gap on the overall funding.
So we are speaking with the Fremont County Commissioners at this point. We do not have a commitment, but we are talking. So that is definitely a good thing, and hopefully, we will hear some good news from them. We are also talking with some other local businesses, because we do, the Recreation District does receive funding from the Newmont Legacy Fund, and one individual, and that's a dollar-for-dollar match by Newmont Mine, and one individual in the community donated a significant amount, and Newmont matched it. So I actually spoke with him and said, would you be okay if we use that for the feasibility study? He said absolutely, so I thought that was, I think that's what he was looking to do anyway. So it was a wonderful gift by him, and I did speak with him personally and thanked him. I don't think he wants to be named publicly, but he is very appreciative that we said thank you. We are speaking with some other local businesses. One, I believe, we're going to get in, but until we have something firm, I'd rather not. We've also approached four other businesses in the community, and they are contemplating as we speak, but I am optimistic. Again, considering we don't have anything, I really would not want to name them out. I don't think it'd be appropriate, but once they do donate, we are more than happy to release something to the media and then also recognize them formally in a meeting to tell them thank you. But we believe that we will have all funds secured. At the end of the day, we are committing 30,000, but we know that we do have other money in reserves, so if worse comes to worse and we have to dive into that pool, we will deal with it. No pun intended. So that was it on funding, but we did break down the cost of each study. If you do include reimbursables, so for travel, things like that, one proposal from OLC came in lower than the proposal from CRP Architects. Actually, and the committee, and you're going to notice that within the IGA that was updated, that the committee is making a formal recommendation to the Board of Directors to approve one of those proposals. And it is going to actually go, ironically, it's going to actually go to the lowest bidder. We weren't planning on that being the lowest bidder, but when we put paper and pencil together, it actually did come out being that way. There was some, it was a different way that they, I think, Ryan, how they budgeted it. It was, they really itemized it, so we really had to go in and really spend some time. But at the end of the day, the one that was selected by the committee also happened to be the lowest. So it's nice when those two things go hand in hand. But I'm happy to answer questions as to why we're looking at a feasibility study. I know that some people may have some questions. The Commissioners did have that today. I'm happy to answer any of those questions that you may have as to why we're looking at going this way, considering that we did this in the beginning of, or toward the end of 18, and then again toward the end of 19. So fire away.
I think it would be appropriate to address that, especially because any time you can have an opportunity to educate and have a conversation, it's going to be important. And I have heard that question a lot coming from community members on many sides.
The easiest way to put that is, the feasibility study that was done was for a recreation center. Plain and simple. It was done with the recreation center and would the community get behind it? And one of the catalysts for that was the fact that a citizens' group had already been meeting for two years, or nearly two years at that time, and surveys had been done by the city of Canyon City that there was support for a recreation center. So following up that survey and the community group that had formed, we kind of followed the community's lead and really looked at a recreation center hard. There were two studies done. The first one by Ballard King, they were the lead, and then OLC was involved in some design work, and that found overwhelming support in the community to pursuing a recreation center. It did say that the financial implications were a potential hindrance, and that was in there. And then, once we kind of had the concept identified, there was a more in-depth study done through Barker, Ricker, CCAT, and they brought in some partners for survey work, Proforma, things along those lines. And once they were able to narrow that down, we actually had a proposal that we could take to the community. The first one had three options. What we had to do was get to one. So again, that was just for a recreation center. As Commissioner Grantham mentioned in a meeting earlier today, that was for a rec center, and now we're, and one of the differences, at the time, we had a pool. We don't have one now. The game has changed. Also, remember, those two studies that were done were pre-COVID, pre-inflation. So you have to take that into account. So now, considering the fact that the citizens overwhelmingly said no to the recreation center option in November of 2021, here we are, less than two years later. I don't know if that has changed. I have a hard time believing that the sentiment for a rec center has changed, and the facilities are even more expensive now than they were then. So that left us with, as a board, as the Recreation District Board, do we go forward and look at just a pool option, potentially year-round, potentially seasonal, we don't know? And that was the direction we decided to go, and that was, okay, let's look at the pool option. We didn't do one like that last time. So it's an apples-and-oranges comparison, two completely different projects. We have existing land where the pool is, an existing facility. Are there potential options to go somewhere else? Maybe, but we have to explore that. So what this feasibility study will do is several things. It will tell us what direction the community wants to go. I think it's safe to say, based on our meeting here and at the meeting that we had at Canyon City High School for a board meeting, was that opinions vary in the community on which direction we should go. So the feasibility study needs to really iron down what direction the citizens want to go. It's not about what the Rec District wants, it's about what the community wants, and we have to be able to listen. And we also, once we determine that, we have to determine how much it's going to cost, from demolition, to disposal, site prep, and then installation, and then getting all the soft costs taken care of. So whether it's lap lines, diving boards, computer equipment, whatever it may be that we need to run that facility, we have to know what that number is. Fortunately, we have construction projects going on right now in this state that are apples-to-apples comparisons in communities that are just a little smaller than ours, and one is in Carbondale. But if we don't study those and study this, then we're basically playing darts. We don't know what the actual number is. The citizens deserve, when you're dealing with tax dollars, to know exactly how much money a project is going to cost from start to end, and how much it's going to cost to operate it. The feasibility study will tell us that. We cannot rely on data from a recreation center and just assume, oh, we can turn that into an outdoor pool and just go with that. That would be irresponsible. And so as much as, trust me, the Recreation District Board does not want to go out and spend over $70,000, but what other option do we have? And so that's where we're at. We need to do that, and we're also thinking ahead. So the plan now is to do a feasibility study. They should take close to six months. They really should. If they're done well and there's public input, they should take six months. Once that is done and we know the cost to operate, the cost to do the entire project, then that gives us numbers that we can then talk to the voters about and then go to surveys. And we've already worked, talked with a survey company about this, who probably has the top track record in the state for polling, and what options we have, so then look to do a survey, April, May, June, in that area, and then that allows us to know from city council standpoint, from the Recreation District Board of Director's standpoint, do we have enough support to go to the voters? Is that information accurate? Do we have the support of the community based on polling to move forward with paying for a ballot question? Because, as you know, elections are not cheap, and this will impact the city of Canyon City and the Recreation District, probably somewhere around $20,000 each. So we have to be able to account for that. That is the reason for the feasibility study. The one thing I would encourage the people who are listening, or watching, or they're going to read something in the paper or something online later, the feasibility study is an option for you as a citizen to get involved and make your voice heard. You have a choice right now. If you choose not to participate, that's on you, but don't complain about the project moving forward. If you want a voice, you have that opportunity right now. This is the time. And so nobody in the community can say, oh, well, we didn't know about it, we weren't sure about it. Trust me, we are going to put this everywhere, but you will have options. One of the groups talked about, the one that we're proposing, said as many as five different public engagements. So that was the key to the proposal. What is your public engagement going to be? Because at the end of the day, it's not about what the Board of Directors wants, what you necessarily, the city council, want, or Ryan or I. It's about what the people want for their aquatics facility in this community. It's time for us to listen, not to determine, but to listen, and then let the experts tell us what those results are. So that is the reason for a feasibility study. If you want us to play the dartboard game, we're happy to do it. However, nobody's going to be happy at the end of the day.
So as part of that RFP process, we did put public engagement very much in the forefront of...
The one thing I would encourage the people who are listening or watching, or they're going to read something in the paper or something online later, the feasibility study is an option for you as a citizen to get involved and make your voice heard. You have a choice right now. If you choose not to participate, that's on you. But don't complain about the project moving forward. If you want a voice, you have that opportunity right now. This is the time. And so nobody in the community can say, oh, well, we didn't know about it. We weren't sure about it. Trust me, we are going to put this everywhere. But you will have options. The one of the groups talked about, the one that we're proposing, said as many as five different public engagements. So that was the key to the proposal. What is your public engagement going to be? Because at the end of the day, it's not about what the Board of Directors wants, what you necessarily, the city council, want, or Ryan or I. It's about what the people want for their aquatics facility in this community. It's time for us to listen, not to determine, but to listen, and then let the experts tell us what those results are. So that is the reason for a feasibility study. If you want us to play the dartboard game, we're happy to do it. However, nobody's going to be happy at the end of the day.
So as part of that R F P process, we did put public engagement very much in the forefront of of what we were looking for from the from the respondents. And that, you know, I I think we we had some good discussion with both of the applicants and you know, I think even during contracting, we're talking about, you know, the Rec District's even talking about writing specific metrics into into the contract.
And and we did talk with Ryan about that. We said, would you be interested in helping us out on that contract? And really nail this down to make sure that public engagement is there. There are also some budget items that we may not need to deal with, that we can adjust to bring the cost of that feasibility study down. So we are really nailing that down within the contract portion. But before we get there, we have to be able to award, and then the negotiations begin.
All right, we have Councilmember Tracy in the queue.
Thanks to both City Administrator Ryan Stevens and to you, Kyle Horn with Rec District. This may in some ways seem like it's premature to raise this now, but I do think it's just kind of at the critical core of the issue. And that is not just what the community wants, but how, what are the various possible ways that the community can pay for it? Because my recollection, at least from what I know of the last ballot issue, was that because of the nature of the special district, the Recreation District, you you have limited ways to fund something like this. And it was going to be a, back then, several years ago, it was going to be a significant chunk on people's property tax bills. So even though I think there's really widespread support in the community for whatever the proposal ends up being, redoing the pool, something a little more than that, something year-round, I think we have to, and I just want to hear more from both of you about how the feasibility study can help address that part of it. Because I think we know we need a pool. We know the community needs a pool. But what are the various creative ways we can think of funding the project so that we can achieve it, rather than having another turned down because it's just more than what the community will will bear?
I'll I'll let Ryan go first. One of the one of the, one of the things, to be fair, when when we did close the pool, we we did immediately reach out to to Ryan and and to city council so you could see firsthand what we were dealing with. And Ryan and I had just an honest conversation at the monthly managers' meeting. And it was just, it was impromptu and just, just kicking around some ideas. And he had an interesting idea for city participation, which I thought was, it was, we looked at and explored in twenty twenty, but we found the community overwhelmingly did not want that option. And that was a sales tax slash property tax combination. We are now looking at that again, but the difference is you're looking at a smaller sales tax and a and a significantly smaller mill levy impact as well. But when you have participation like this, you're able to hit multiple areas of of revenue. And I'll let Ryan talk about it from the city perspective, but the Rec District is very excited about that idea.
I think this is the perfect time to be talking about this this topic. And you know, that that's, and we we spoke about it with the the two applicants or the two two vendors that provided proposals. You know, we need the public engagement in order to help push us in whatever direction is the right direction, what what's going to be supported by the community. Is it a sales tax to build and, you know, operation for for the Rec District through through mill levy? You know, that that's a likely option, but you know, until we get feedback from the community, I I don't know that we can answer specifically. I think there are opportunities for private investments or private donations and things like that. But in order to get this built and, you know, have have it bonded, you know, you're probably going to need the guaranteed income of a tax initiative. And then as additional revenues come in, you can reduce that cost based off of additional contributions.
So you you feel, it sounds like you feel as if the feasibility study will include a close look at that piece of it. Because I really think that's where we run into brick walls in the past.
So I I it is. I think it's safe to say it is the belief of the Recreation District, as well as Ryan from our conversations. The best way to get something to happen is to show the community cooperation. I think when you have two government entities supporting, and again, we're we're hopeful that the county will will participate in the feasibility study as well. But when you have multiple agencies working together for the common good of the people, I think that that's a win for the taxpayers. We will always get the question of, well, find a grant. Well, there's always, there, contrary to popular belief, there is not a grant for everything. I wish there was, but sometimes it is a no. We have identified a couple of grants that could happen, but in most of those cases, you must have the funding secured, then go after the grant because of matching funds. One of them, for an example, said, in order for us to get thirty thousand dollars, we would have to have thirty percent of the project fund secured. And I said, so I want to make sure I have this straight. I need to have over three million, three million secured to get thirty thousand dollars. And they said yes. That's, that's a pretty steep ask. That's just one example. So it's not that we haven't explored grants. It's just historically, pools are funded by the taxpayer. There might be some philanthropist that comes out and donates a significant amount of money. That may happen in some communities every now and then. But for the most part, they're funded through tax dollars. People may not want to hear that, but it doesn't mean it isn't true. You just don't like it. I I I'm not here proposing, yay, I want to do this. I'm just trying to tell you what your number one option is. In a lot of cases, it's one, two, and three options. And and that's where we're at. It it comes down to, do you want to make that investment or do you not? And I'm hoping this community does want to make this investment.
We have Councilmember Schmisher in line.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a similar question to Councilwoman Tracy, but maybe asking it in a slightly different way. How will they approach that issue differently in this feasibility study than they did in the feasibility study of three years ago? Because I think we, that that feasibility study didn't seem to be successful to me because we, you know, we did the feasibility study. It seemed like people were very excited, very much wanted this, but then it was obviously very much not wanted once we got to the polls. So I'm interested in their proposals. They really didn't get into that level of detail. So I'm hoping in your conversations, like, how will this feasibility study be done differently so that we actually get the information that we need to know whether or not folks will support?
So so we asked that question. And by the way, I do want to mention that the selection team included a member from Citizens for a Pool, included two Recreation District Board members, Ryan and Rick from the city, and then myself and and our finance director at the Recreation District. So we made sure that there were plenty of voices in the room from three different entities. So we made sure that that happened. But we did specifically ask that question. That was one of our concerns because the survey work and everything else showed a potential win of close to sixty percent right around that area. And then when it came time for the election, it lost by eighteen points. That's a significant swing. There were several reasons for it that we believe, one is overall the tax impact at the time. Two, it was an odd-year election. Normally, for recreation questions, you need about sixty-five percent voter participation. This one had under fifty within the Rec District boundaries, so that played a role. You also have, you know, I mentioned the tax impacts, but you also had the emotion of the location and whether or not the community wanted it on the abbey or whether or not they want the abbey even developed. And I think that that got mixed into it. And finally, you did have a a reassessment year, and people were were not happy at property taxes at that time. So there was a lot of things that hit. Momentum began to shift the other way, I would probably say, in about mid-September. Mid to late September is where there was a shift in public input. Of course, survey work had already been done, everything else. And and we're hoping to 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 get more folks in in the community on board this time. The other thing is, I I heard from multiple people, well, you have the pool. You guys have always made it work. You'll continue to make it work. We warned everybody at that time, look, the pool wasn't going to last. We said that at every single meeting. We said, we just hope to get another two years out of this thing. We we did. We literally got twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two out of it, but we didn't get twenty twenty-three. And and we we don't have that this year. By the way, we tried to operate that facility this year. We did everything in our power to get that open. It wasn't, it wasn't happening. The eventually it flipped, and we have, we have some issues. The, we 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 tried, but as far as feasibility goes, we are trying to find a way to draw out some of those questions. And part of that is going to come down to some of the survey work and the public engagement, to really find a way to engage the more conservative voter, to get them involved. It doesn't do you any good when you have a room full of people that are already on board. You've got to, you you have to go out and seek out those that may be either on the fence or against the project, which is why we're saying right now, and we we talked about actually going to, the the folks doing the the study said, we'll go to coffee shops, we'll go to restaurants, we'll try to find those people and get their input. But I would also say, we want those people, everybody, to come to the public meetings, to make their voice heard. We we want to know where they land. I also think you're going to have more scientific polling through Magellan Strategies. I think that gives us a better option for when the feasibility study is done, to really draw some of that information out as well. So we are trying to do things differently and really trying to go to the people and not just have them come to us. But we do want to implore people to to come join us at those public meetings. But that group did insist that they would go to the public. Ryan heard it, I heard it. O L C and Ballard King said they would go to them. So we're hoping that's what happens.
Thank you. That's helpful. I had two additional, but I'm happy to seed and come back.
Can we go to Mayor Protem Hamrick, and then we'll come back to you again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. The the, when I first started hearing about the request for proposal, one of the things that crossed my mind was, gee whiz, and 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 let me say upfront, you know, I absolutely support us getting a pool and and doing what we need to do to to get it. But the the first thing that crossed my mind is, gee whiz, do we really need another study? And and but, so I would suggest a change of language, that this is not just a feasibility study. It's a feasibility study in engineering analysis. Because we're getting for the money we're going to spend, we're going to get an estimate for demolition of the old pool, we're going to get an estimate for construction of the new pool, we're going to get an operational estimate for operation of the new pool. So it is not a feasibility study. We are not doing a feasibility study. We are doing a study and engineering analysis. I think that's an important language correction to be made for the for the general public. The the, one of the, one of the things that, you know, if 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 we had someone with infinite wisdom, they they would know what the community wants and and what to do to 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 achieve that, to fill that, fulfill that need. We're really talking about a need here. I mean, but but the, I am troubled by spending any dollars at looking at different locations, unless you have already someone that has donated land. And if that were the case, fine, throw throw land analysis into the equation. But I, the, you know, what what I think I learned from the election is that the ci- is that the the population would support a pool where it is. And and to study other places we can put it at great cost and expense to the public on both sides of the equation, both to have the study done and to buy the land, I think, is not in the public interest. And I would, I would recommend that you reconsider that particular aspect of the study and analysis because because we do, we do need to know demolition costs. We do need to know construction costs. And so those are, those are, those are my comments. And, you know, the the it, part of what we do need to know is what are the options for for funding this? That is, that was, I think, the big, the big, the big poison pill from last time is how, the, just the cost and where the money was going to come from, from people on, you know, a lot of times on fixed incomes and things like that. So I think it's important that we do discover those facts and that we do take the the time and spend the necessary dollars to to make sure we've got that right. So thank you.
So, John, ju- just so you're aware, one of the reasons that we looked at potentially other sites was there is one key element missing from the location that we have right now, and that is lack of parking. It is all side-street parking. So the reason that we looked at the potential and to keep our, it it was about trying to show some forward thinking and looking at something that, a facility that may be around for fifty-plus years. Do we need to have the forward thinking to really look at the parking issue, to try to maybe resolve that? And if that's possible, that location? Or do we need to look at another site to where we can offer expanded parking, things along those lines? Or if there are expanded recreation opportunities down the road? Do we need to, do we need to look at it? That was the reason for the other locations. We're not saying we're going to go to another location. We just wanted to make sure it was an option within the study to make sure that we're leaving no stone unturned. That was the reason for that element.
Will this study consider that, at that location? I mean, the diagram you showed us at the last meeting showed that the basketball court would could possibly remain intact. But if that basketball court came down, could that be parking?
It it could be.
Put a basketball court at Red Park across the street.
Correct. Well, well, we have, currently, we have basketball courts at Harrison Park as well as Rouse Park, and there is another one at Centennial. So there are facilities that have outdoor courts. So we felt that that was the potential where we could, but we we could look at parking. We have also, Ryan and I have also approached Canyon City Schools as they are in the middle of trying to look at their issues and potentially design. We asked them about, is there the potential for some sort of parking element in that front area? And of course, they 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 have plans that they're working on, but we we just want to plant that seed. Is there an option there? Is there something that we can do with Twelfth Street? Again, we're trying to keep an open mind. That's all going to be a part of the study as we really try to analyze what is the best option for that location moving forward. But we, but if there is no parking option, is there another location that we could potentially go to? We, we just wanted to keep an open mind. We didn't want to eliminate another possibility. That that, and that was, that was it. That was the primary reason.
One of, one other comment. Just make sure that that included in the evaluation is a request to the city to close Twelfth Street for parking purposes and vacate that and make that a parking law, vacate that street.
We've already looked at and started analyzing that as well.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a valid consideration. Let's go back to Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question specific to the new paragraph number five, additional contribution or refund. It wasn't clear to me how that would be determined, whether or not an additional contribution would be needed from the city or if monies would be refunded to the city. Is it based on a percentage formula? Or how would that be determined? Thanks.
One of the things that we wanted to do was, in the previous R F P, there was an equal partnership between the county, the Rec District, and the city. And the city was the lead on that. And it was, if for whatever reason, numbers go higher than expected, the three entities were going to share that equal. This R F P has been structured a little differently. The proposal has been for the city to do twenty-five thousand and and a hard stop. What we wanted to do was leave some language in there where, let's say, something unexpected happened within the study, and we're at the reimbursables and we're over eighty thousand dollars now. We just wanted to then say, say that we We just wanted to then say, say that we could then have a conversation with the city, is there any wiggle room to get an extra $1,000 or $2,000? That was the only reason for that language. It wasn't, it will happen, which was in the previous RFP or in the previous IGA. It was, we will have discussions in good faith about, is there potentially help? There's, we're not asking for it, we're just saying, you're open to a discussion. On the flip side, let's say things go completely well and, for example, one of the items that we're looking at is $3,500 and that's an existing facility, life cycle surveying analysis, we've, we've done that. So we're gonna ask to have that removed. So let's say we come in under the cost proposal of 74,250. So then we would then sit down and go, okay, we need to refund because that's the amount that we were looking to raise. And could, should there be a refund then? Sit down, meet with the city, say, how do we wanna do this? It came in less expensive than what we had anticipated. Do we need to have a refund? Trust me, nothing would make me happier than to say, hey, guess what? We need to give you a refund. Nothing would make me happier. But we wanted language in there that dealt with both issues. But keep in mind, within this IGA, what we are asking for is $25,000, no more. We're just saying if it was there, would you be willing to have a discussion? That's it. No commitment, just a simple discussion.
Thanks. I appreciate the historical context as to how the last one was structured and why that's in this one. Just for clarity's sake, has our attorney had a chance to review this version of this agreement?
I have. And, and I had similar concerns to you as, that you're expressing, especially about the refund issue. I, I left it as is, and I'll tell you why, and you can, because I think, based upon what the RFP or the responses to the RFP are coming in at, I thought the likelihood of a refund was probably pretty slim. Maybe great, but probably pretty slim. So I, I kinda left it at, is, you know, there's another option where, you know, the city can, you know, commit to paying 25,000, but the actual payment comes later down the road when they get an, when we get an invoice from the rec. district. The way that I read this, and I don't know if it's meant to read this way, is that the city's gonna hand over the money now. Yes? Okay. So...
After it being invoiced?
Oh, yeah. But it's not necessarily like when the invoices are coming from the consultant. Yeah. So, it's kind of an upfront payment. So one way to avoid the refund issues is to pay later, but that hasn't been discussed. So I'm just surprising everybody by throwing that out there, so.
So, one of the other things that the company is doing is they're gonna be invoicing us on a monthly basis. But the goal is to have the money for the fund ready to go, sitting in that account, and then we pay it off on a monthly basis. If there's money left over, we will then look with anybody who partnered in and bought in, then we would then immediately be looking at how we refund that. That, that would be the perfect scenario. I don't count on that, but I felt that language in there probably would be appropriate. And by the way, similar language was in the last IGA as well.
I just have a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction and maybe a warning. Just considering the citizens' input already of just like, why are we spending money on another study? Even though you've given us a very thorough and long explanation why this is an apples-to-oranges study and slash engineering study. The question's still out there. You know, why are we spending so much money? And we were already saying, oh, well, it's gonna cost 60, $70,000. And when it came back at $80,000, my stomach definitely took a big lurch and it's still churning a little bit over that price tag. So, I don't wanna, I, I really would advise that I don't wanna hear coming back asking for more money. Like, I really hope we can get this into a reasonable cost.
I do not disagree with you.
Yeah. Especially because the, I think the citizens really would have a hard time. We need to show that we're being incredible stewards over this whole process as conservative as we can be, so that we can demonstrate and earn their trust that we are gonna produce the best product we can at the lowest amount.
Yeah. And the feasibility studies have gotten, as you all know, they are significantly more expensive now than they even were two, three years ago.
Yeah, so I think everyone here on this dais are familiar with that, but the general public, maybe not so much.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
And that's, that's, they're the ones that are gonna be voting at the end of the day.
Our intent is to ask everybody once and make it work. That's, that is what the Recreation District's goal is on this. Because we also know, the pool is, the pool is and has been entrusted to us by the citizens. And, and we have to take accountability, which is why we made sure that we were putting in the most money of anyone. And if it has to be more than 30, it's gonna be more than 30.
Do you have some more for us, Councilmember Schmisher?
I have one last question.
Okay.
With regard to number four in the IGA, the party representatives really appreciate Administrator Stevens and Economic Development Director Harmon serving on the RFP Technical Evaluation Panel. I noticed in the IGA, it calls for three representatives from each party. So I'm wondering, City Administrator Stevens, if the, if those conversations have already been had and who the city representatives would be? Thanks.
I plan to be one of those representatives. If there are two councilmembers that would like to join, certainly can do that. And then, you know, if, if there is still a space available, Rick is open to returning to assist.
That, that is one that I would like to volunteer, if everybody okay? Because, and I was on the one previously, did a lot of work with Kyle, and I'd like to continue with, with this as well.
And I'd like to also, unless there are others that wanna get in on it, I, the pool is very near, in a very literal sense, to where I live. In other words, it's in my backyard. So I have a strong interest in how this evolves.
So is you throwing pine cones into the pool? No.
I don't have, no pine, you all have the pine trees.
It's certainly something that I'm very interested in as well, but I'm very happy to have Councilwoman Tracy and Councilmember Dennehy serve on this. Thank you.
Okay, well, we've had a lot of discussion on this. Are we ready to go to a vote to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Recreation District?
We, we do have a couple of minor changes.
I don't use my button very often.
From bathroom.
I do, it just popped up. I saw your eyes getting really big.
I don't know, I can't.
So, okay.
I can't turn it on.
Attorney sellers?
Okay. So there's just a couple of, we were shuffling red lines back and forth this afternoon. There's a couple minor grammatical issues I just wanted to get, bring to your attention. So in the whereas clauses, on the third whereas, there's an and that needs to be removed. The fourth whereas clause needs an and, that's not there. And on the fifth whereas clause, there's another and that needs to be removed. And then, there's a paragraph reference, and this is on the clean version, so the new paragraph six references paragraph seven, and it needs to reference paragraph five.
The new paragraph six needs...
It currently references paragraph seven in the third line, and it needs to say paragraph five. So this is in the text of paragraph six. I'm sorry, this is very confusing when said out loud.
Okay.
And that's it.
You should reference that one.
Okay. So, the motion would need to be to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Recreation District for the swimming pool and Recreation and Engineering Study, with the amendments in the third whereas to remove the and, the fourth whereas to add an and, the fifth whereas to remove an and, and in the new text, paragraph six referencing paragraph seven needs to be changed to paragraph five.
Madam Mayor, I still move.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Awesome. Well, let's get moving forward to get this swimming pool. Kyle Hart, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you all.
And tireless efforts to take care of our community and get us this pool back in action.
Yep, and look forward to working with you all and, of course, more importantly, with citizens as we try to get this figured out.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Thank you.
We're here to partner with you. And we now have item 9C. That is an ordinance referral to committee for retail establishment liquor permit. And so this is just a referral so we can take it to the general government meeting, correct?
That is correct. So this, this is change in state liquor laws that allows retail establishments to apply for a limited number of licenses to serve alcohol. And this would be the ordinance that would allow the city to enact that. We're asking for it to be referred to the October 4th General Government Meeting. And Cindy, as our city clerk and liquor license guru, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I know our businesses will be extremely ecstatic about this. They've been asking for this since I started with their first Friday specifically anniversary things. They constantly are trying to find ways to be able to do things like this. So being able to have their own permit will greatly be appreciated. I will finally be a good word on Main Street for a little while.
Oh, we want you to be a good word on Main Street.
It was, it was good to be able to tell Ryan, guess what we have? And he was out going down Main Street, talking to people about it, and all positive so far.
Excellent. Yeah, no, I know they have been asking for it for years. And before the solutions that were available through the state of Colorado were very complex and would be difficult for us as a small town to implement. So this is exciting. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just noticed that we had a Main Street business owner in the audience and thought that they may be here for this reason and may want to speak.
Do you wish to speak to council? Absolutely. Come in and please give your name and your business for our public record.
I don't do this, Pam does.
Well, it's nice to see you taking the, the lead on this.
So I'm Patricia Messer. I'm co-owner of Kaleidoscope Inspiration. And one thing that we've always partnered with a lot of the local businesses, Apple Valley, Apple Cider, Pops Vineyard, all of those. And the way that we have always done it, except for the first one, sorry, we were illegal at that time. We didn't know this. But we found that those, the companies, the businesses, the local businesses that have tasting rooms, they apply towards the city to move their tasting room to our physical location for that specific night. It works with us as having the, the tasting, the being able to sell for them as well as getting their name out and partnering with them. So they do have the ability, and it's really simple. It doesn't cost anything, which we found out years ago when we've started this. It doesn't cost anything, we just have to make a four plan and at that point, it just goes forward. All they have to do is apply for it each month, saying, hey, we wanna put our tasting room here. So every business downtown has the ability to do that. And our thought too, it's, I think it's a great idea, truthfully, but what is the ability of someone going down, buying a bottle of liquor at Walmart or whatever and selling it at their business? How is that promoting local businesses? Not just ours, but those that are within our community, allowing them to promote their product within our business? And it's a simple process. How can it make? By just allowing everybody to do it, to go down, buy the liquor wherever, it doesn't promote the local businesses that are in our community.
So I think that's, those are the kinda questions and discussions that we would need to have if the council votes to say that this is a worthy enough subject to take, to a committee to have these further discussions. If we vote to do that, do we have a date proposed for...
Yeah, so you would be referring to a specific date. That would be October 4th for the General Government Meeting.
Okay.
And can I respond one thing on that? Just so you're aware, on this, this specific permit, it only is allowed to do so many days within the year. It's not every day. It's, and I can't think of it, it's 24 for the entire year. So it would also still have other opportunities to have those type things in. They could do a mixture. So there are ways that it could do both. So it wouldn't just be like, no, they're not gonna be down here, no, they can't do it. When we were looking at this, I think they were envisioning more of doing it on just certain special occasions. Like, I know Nelson's Jewelry is always asking me, hey, we're having this, this anniversary thing, can we have this? I'm like, I'm sorry, no. You know, they wanna do champagne or something, you know, for an engagement party type thing. And that will allow them to do some of those events that maybe they, partnering with somebody probably wouldn't be the best for that kind of a situation. And I think that's where they're really looking at some of the other different ways. So try to get a balance of both.
So what we're looking for now is a motion from City Council willing to take this to a General Government Committee on October 4th to have further discussion and consideration. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, I move that council refers this to the, this ordinance for retail establishment liquor permits to the General Government Meeting on October 4th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right. This topic will move to our General Government Meeting. Patricia, please make sure everybody knows. I mean, we'll do our part too, but we'll look forward to hearing more from you then. Thanks for being here tonight. We now have item 9D. This is to amend Resolution 6, Series of 2023, on the Red Canyon Park Trails Committee. Now, we already met, we have formed a committee resolution, we've interviewed committee members, we decided we wanna add an additional member. So we need to, to do a little amendment to make this happen, right?
That is correct, and we also need to appoint a chair as well. And Leo Evans, our Public Works Director, do you have anything else you'd like to add regarding this topic?
No, I think you covered it. The resolution just expands the membership in total to six with the addition of one Fremont County resident, as we had four applicants that were all very well qualified and suited to serve on this committee.
Councilmember Worthington?
In addition to, or asking for approval, I would also like to nominate Amy to be the Chair of the Committee. I think she would be a good voice for that committee.
Is that something that you're willing to accept?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that nomination, Councilmember Worthington. Protecting and preserving Red Canyon Park is really important treasure of our cities, and I would be honored to chair that committee.
Is any further discussion by council? We'd like to entertain a motion to approve, to amend Resolution 6 and appoint Councilmember Schmisher as the Chair. Councilmember Tracy, I missed you on the last couple of ones. Do you wanna take this one?
Oh, sure. I move that we amend Resolution 6, Series of 2023, to allow a total of six members on the committee and to designate Councilmember Amy Schmisher as Chair of the Committee.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent, really exciting. Can't wait to hear the reports on how everything goes. Thank you to both Councilmember Schmisher and Councilmember Worthington for your willingness to serve on this committee. Item 9E is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 10, Series of 2023, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Certain Sections of Chapter 5.12 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Contractor Licensing Executives..." Contractor Licensing, period. We don't need an executive session on that. This has already gone to a General Government Committee for lots of discussion, but it's time to have a formal discussion at City Council meeting.
We will hand it over to Kathy Olsher, building official.
Okay, excellent. Kathy, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. As you know, under Section 512.050, license examinations, the, we require to have our general A, B, C and our mechanical... There we go. Can you hear me now? We require that our contractors test through International Code Council, that's ICC. We do not accept any other jurisdictions' testing requirements. This just really puts the language in perspective that we will not accept, especially if it's not an ICC test. We won't accept other jurisdictions' ICC. We won't accept other jurisdictions' ICC tests that aren't tested through ICC. Under Section 512.060, under trade licenses, right now, we allowed four trades licensed per contractor. This here just doesn't allow them to change in midstream in a twelve-month period. They can't go back and say, oh, I don't want to be a drywaller now, I want to be an insulator, especially if they have four licenses. They are locked into those four trades for that one-year period. We needed a little bit more clarification of language and more specific timeframes for revoking and suspending licenses. So there was a little bit of language put into there. I know at General Government Committee, it was asked about reaching out to the contractors to let them know ahead of time. I emailed them the next day. I sent out four-hundred-and-ninety-five emails. I received probably between ten and fifteen calls or responses. Most of them were roofing contractors or solar contractors. Actually, some of them sent me their ICC tests. Many other jurisdictions do require that roofers take the ICC test because they have different trades exams as well. Some of them require framers and solar companies to also take their test. We do not require that here. So anyhow, we're just looking for City Council's approval on all amendments of Ordinance Ten, Series of 2023, for Title V, Chapter 512 of the Canyon City Municipal Code.
Kathy, thank you for taking the diligence and sending out four-hundred-and-ninety-five emails to get feedback. That was really important to us, that communication was made. We do have a contractor that's here in the audience today. He had the time to express an interest in addressing council. Is that still the same?
I don't know.
Okay. One of the concerns that was brought up is just mostly a clarification, because we have on here that a contractor for a one-year period can only have four different contracting licenses. I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not saying there can only be four cement, you know, licenses issued in the city. That, there's unlimited opportunities for cement, you know, licenses to be issued, or roofing licenses, or solar licenses. It's just for one particular person to hold for in a year. And if they want more, then they just need to bump up to a general contractor.
That is correct. They would need to go take the ICC test and become a general contractor.
Yes. Did you receive any other feedback from your ten to fifteen responses besides them saying, well, hey, by the way, here's my ICC...
They, they just asked what it was really about, and so I went through the ordinance with them. Some of them, I attached a copy of the ordinance. Some of them actually read it, and they just asked questions, mainly to make sure that they didn't have to go test, that they were grandfathered in, or, and like, say, almost all of them, I never received any inquiries from a general contractor. So it was all roofers and solar companies.
Okay. Any other, oh, yes, we do. Councilmember Schmisher?
Exactly the same thing that you had said. Just thank you so much for taking the time, Building Official. Really appreciate it, and glad to hear that we had so much feedback from contractors. It's clear that they were interested, and thank you so much for coming tonight as well. So, thanks.
Okay, anything else from the council? Let's take a motion.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I move for approval on first reading, Ordinance Ten, Series of 2023, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Certain Sections of Chapter Five Point One Two of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Contractor Licensing."
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. There will be another reading on this. There'll be a second reading in two weeks. So if there is more feedback, there's time to bring it to City Council's attention. All right. I'm going to turn the table to you. Yes, let's go to a motion, please. Final one of the day.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. Executive session to consider personnel matters pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, specifically regarding the evaluation of the city administrator.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second to go into executive session. I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move into the other chambers at this time. Thank you so much to everyone that was here tonight. Have a good evening and safe travels home.